I'm going to call this meeting to order and we're going to ask Pastor Scott Rimmer for Community United Methodist Church to come forward and give the invocation. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Let us pray. Oh God, we give you thanks for all of your mighty works. You are loving and gracious and we thank you for creating us to live in community with others. We thank you, Lord, for all those who have answered the call to public service, who are not content to be observers, but instead have accepted the mantle of leadership. We give thanks for the ways of service they have chosen to take up on behalf of all of us here. I pray, oh God, for your blessings upon tonight's council meeting. As items are presented, as opinions are expressed, and as decisions are made, be with all those who are a part of this process. Give them the spirit of discernment along with wisdom and strength to do what is right and good for our citizens and for our city. Bless the citizens gathered here tonight and bless our mayor, council members, our city staff, our first responders, and all those who work to make Virginia Beach such a wonderful city. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. And now for our moment of silence, I'm going to ask council member Rocky Holcomb, who is a distinguished member of our sheriff's department, to do a special moment of silence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could get you to join me in a moment of silence for a brave hero, Virginia Beach Fire Captain Matt Chevy Cheverotti, who lost his battle to cancer yesterday. A brave hero here to the citizens of Virginia Beach, if you could join me in a moment of
Thank you all. Virginia Beach is indeed a city of heroes. The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance for all.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, before we get started-
Oh, no, please, Rocky.
I would like to thank Pastor Rimmer from District One here in Virginia Beach, and I would encourage anybody to come out and see his church family at Community United Methodist Church in District One. Thank you, Pastor.
Let me put it this way, Councilmember Holcomb is indeed a true champion for District One, as all the council people are for their respective districts. Okay, at this point, roll call, Madam Clerk.
All present, Your Honor.
Okay, do I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second.
The vote is open. By a vote of eleven to zero, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
All right, and then do I have a motion for the acceptance of the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of April 4, 2023, and the special formal session of April 11, 2023? So moved.
Second.
Okay.
The vote is open. By a vote of eleven to zero, we have approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay, thank you very much. And, you know, we as a council always welcome the opportunity to welcome the many people within our communities that do our many great things for our community to make us a great place. And first proclamation will be for National Volunteer Week, with Audrey Vett Jackson accepting, and Councilmember Henley has kindly, you know, volunteered to read this well-deserved proclamation.
Are there any others who would like to come up with you?
Yeah, come on up.
We've got a lot of wonderful volunteers.
Welcome, welcome all of you.
Okay. Whereas National Volunteer Week was established in 1974 by presidential proclamation and has continued annually to recognize the impact of volunteer service throughout the country. And whereas the city of Virginia Beach is proud of the thousands of volunteers who selflessly provide assistance at city government offices and programs, nonprofits, faith-based organizations, and other voluntary organizations each year. And whereas over 9,300 volunteers gave 790,000 hours of their time to the City of Virginia Beach government programs alone in 2022. And whereas volunteers play an integral role in the fabric of our community by providing an immense array of services from mentoring our children, feeding the hungry, helping people recover from emergencies, beautifying our parks and beaches, helping our seniors, and much more. And whereas volunteers serve our community with compassion and empathy, creating positive change that should never be underestimated or ignored, but loudly recognized and celebrated. And whereas collectively, the work done by volunteers improves the quality of life in Virginia Beach, making it a more desirable place to live, work, and play. Therefore, I, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, does hereby proclaim April 2016 through the 22nd, 2023, as National Volunteer Week in Virginia Beach. Furthermore, and urges our residents to recognize the positive impact of volunteerism in our communities. In witness whereof, he has hereby set his hand and caused the official seal of the City of Virginia Beach to be affixed this 18th day of April, 2023. Signed, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, Mayor.
It's one of those photo ops. Yeah, come on in. Yeah, and please say some words.
Yes, sir. My pleasure. Awesome. To the Honorable Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Henley, and our elected members of City Council, City Mayor Duhany, good evening. To be in the room where it happens in my hometown is always a pleasure. I am honored. Tonight, I stand in gratitude to accept the proclamation honoring the volunteers who serve in the City of Virginia Beach. It was 45 years ago, a group of volunteers, under the direction of Mary C. Russo, established the Office of Volunteer Resources. With a mission to put community in government, they rallied behind her. Today, her legacy stands as OVR celebrates the 9,000-plus volunteers in 31 departments across the city of Virginia Beach that work alongside our talented workforce and extend exceptional services to our residents. As they volunteer, they bring so much to our city: experience, vision, leadership, and inspiration, and these are just the talents they bring. But oh, the time they give. We are forever grateful for the people who show up. The Office of Volunteer Resources believes in recognizing those who give their most nonrenewable resource their time. Those are volunteers like Robert "Bobby" Hill, who has served in service and in support of EMS for 50 years; the episodic volunteers who joined our Public Works Office at the Great American Cleanup; Jeff Floyd, who has served as a volunteer for 17 years after retiring as a Virginia Beach firefighter; and everyone who picked up a book with Economic Development's Read Across America Day. However you show up for our community, we honor your service. I close by acknowledging the amazing staff at the Office of Volunteer Resources, including Eileen Carr, absent Joanne Uyger, present Brent Eisenberg, and Megan Kenyon; the leadership of Melissa Zabutis, and the 101 volunteer resource managers and staff liaisons like Diane Hotteling from Housing Resource Center who welcomes our volunteers. You are amazing. We thank our city council for your continued support, as well as our city leadership. Happy National Volunteer Week.
And thank you. The city of Virginia Beach greatly appreciates our military presence here. They are part of our city DNA, they are members of our family as a community. I've asked my fellow Marine, Rocky Holcomb, if he would honor with the proclamation for Month of the Military Child.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And folks, in full disclosure, I usually like to have a week to study this, because they throw them big $10 words in here and I can't pronounce them, but he just sprung this on me, so I'm gonna see if I can make it. Whereas thousands of brave Americans have demonstrated their courage and commitment to freedom by serving in the United States military in active posts nationwide and globally. And whereas, and as there are more than 1.6 million military children who face many challenges and unique experiences because of their parents' service. And whereas, in the city of Virginia Beach, there are approximately 16,000 military children who have been directly affected by military deployment of at least one parent. And whereas, these children are a source of inspiration to all of us, and it is important that we take time to recognize their contributions, celebrate their spirit, and assure our men and women in uniform that while they are protecting our safety and freedom, we are taking care of their children. And the recognition of Month of Military Child allows us to pay tribute to military children for their commitment, pride, and unconditional support of our troops, because when parents serve in the military, their kids are heroes too. Now, therefore, I, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, do hereby proclaim April 2023, Month of the Military Child, in Virginia Beach, and I encourage all citizens, city members, schools, and organizations during this month-long salute to provide direct support to military children and families. In witness whereof, I have hearing two set by my hand and caused the official seal of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, to be affixed to this 18th day of April, 2023. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great job, Rocky. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Our city prides itself on being considered the most caring city in the country, and this is a special honor, a resolution recognizing Autism Acceptance Month, and I ask Councilmember Berluci if you would be so kind.
Thank you, Mayor, and we have some very special guests with us today, and I'd like to invite them all to come to the podium as I read the resolution.
Come on forward.
Welcome, and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I'll start reading now, because it's a long one, so bear with me. Whereas autism spectrum disorder affects an estimated 1 in 36 U.S. children and 1 in 45 U.S. adults, and is a complex condition that affects each person differently, resulting in unique strengths and challenges. And whereas autism results in differences with verbal and nonverbal communication, social interaction, and repetitive behaviors, and can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background. And whereas autism is often accompanied by medical conditions that impact quality of life. And whereas a comprehensive collaborative approach to help promote, will help promote connections to support services, community, and resources that individuals on the autism spectrum need to live fully across their lifespan. And whereas early identification and intervention tailored to individual needs can have lifelong benefits easing the transition to adulthood and fostering greater independence. And whereas each person and family affected by autism should have access to reliable information and supports. And whereas individuals on the autism spectrum should have opportunities to reach their full potential, and the whole of society stands to benefit from this. And whereas eight of the organizations located in Virginia Beach providing services to individuals on the autism spectrum, as well as families affected by autism, are. Families of Autistic Children in Tidewater, FACT, is a local nonprofit serving hundreds of individuals on the autism spectrum each year through social and recreational programs where individuals on the autism spectrum develop and grow their social and communication skills and become more integrated in our community. FACT hosts six weeks of day camps each summer, three different ongoing monthly social programs in a mix of sports, leisure, arts, educational, and life skills programs, six days a week during the school year. In June 2023, FACT will open their state-of-the-art Autism Resource Center, which will serve as a one-stop shop where FACT and seven other organizations provide a variety of complimentary services to thousands of individuals with autism and similar disabilities and their families in one central location in Virginia Beach. The Autism Society of Tidewater, Virginia, has been a local affiliate of the nation's oldest leading grassroots autism organization, the Autism Society of America, for over 40 years, with a mission to create connections, empowering everyone in the autism community with the resources needed to live fully. The organization serves thousands of local families through parent education, respite nights, support groups for parents and adults with autism, 5Ks, family and sensory-friendly events, partnerships and collaborative efforts with local businesses, churches, and law enforcement to increase opportunities and provide experiences for people on the spectrum in their communities. Excuse me. Aid Another is a local nonprofit who provides services to individuals with disabilities in Hampton Roads. Their mission is to promote and empower the unique talents and visions of individuals with a disability. Aid Another has established long-lasting relationships with individuals with disabilities and the community they reside in. It is their vision to help fulfill the adapted needs of children and adults with disabilities and to continue to foster a positive and successful relationship with the people in the community. Aid Another has created a number of programs to enrich the lives of individuals with disabilities in a safe, supportive, and structured environment such as art, dance, music, educational assistance, recreational activities, sports, and vocational and lifestyle development. Commonwealth Autism is a nonprofit based out of Richmond, Virginia, that is excited to be moving into the Hampton Roads area to provide more services for individuals with autism. Commonwealth Autism works towards equitability in the community by reimagining human service systems. Commonwealth Autism celebrates to innovate, operate, and model services that support community inclusion for Virginians with developmental disabilities, such as autism through advocacy that builds awareness and creates engagement. Easter Seals, UCP, and Port Health are trustworthy, compassionate partners, providing exceptional disability behavioral health and addiction treatment services to help our neighbors live their best lives. Purpose, dedication, and empathy drive their in-person and telehealth service delivery. Their diverse and inclusive 2,600-member team provides more than 10.2 million hours of meaningful support to 40,200 kids, adults, and families in 11,000 home facility and community locations across North Carolina and Virginia. Easter Seals UCP is developing a kitchen-teaching lab to immerse individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities in specialized culinary programs. These innovative courses promote social connection, communication skill development, independence, and overall wellness through experiential culinary arts. Leiter Counseling and Consulting provides important psychotherapy services for individuals on the autism spectrum and other members of the Hampton Roads community. The clinical experience of Al Howard at Leiter includes the treatment of a diverse population from children to adults, individuals, couples, and families struggling to cope with mood and behavior disorders, chronic illness, or developmental disorders. His therapeutic approaches are strengths-based and grounded in evidence-based and trauma-focused techniques. Centerra Therapy Centers provides occupational, speech, physical therapy, aquatic therapy, and early intervention therapy, augmentative and alternative communication device evaluations, and autism identification for individuals with autism and similar disabilities of all ages. Their therapists use the most advanced therapy techniques combined with personalized plans to help individuals reach their maximum independence, build on each individual's strengths, and provide individualized supports across needed areas including sensory regulation, communication, and self-advocacy. The Social Butterflies Club program has been providing social communication group therapy services to the Virginia Beach area since 2004. Their organization provides social skills groups for children ages 3 to 12 in a fun, structured environment facilitated by certified speech-language pathologists. The unique therapeutic structure of their program and specialized curriculum also develops speech, language, fine motor, gross motor, and social, emotional, and play skills in a naturalistic environment with peers. Additionally, the Monarch Club Social Skills Program was developed for teens and young adults to provide the next level of social skill alignment with their unique challenges and developmental needs. The Monarch Club program provides their teens and young adults with ongoing support with new social challenges such as jobs, relationships, executive functioning skills, self-regulation, and independence. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Virginia Beach City Council pause in its deliberations to recognize FACT, Autism Society, Tidewater, Virginia, Aid Another, Commonwealth Autism, Easter Seals, UCP, and Port Health, Leiter Consulting and Counseling, Centerra Therapy Centers, and Social Butterflies Club for their efforts to address the diverse needs of individuals on the autism spectrum and their families, and to recognize April 2023 as Autism Acceptance Month in order to create a kinder, more inclusive world for people with autism spectrum disorder. I just want to say, thank you for your dedication, thank you for your service to our community, and thank you for your kindness and compassion, and thanks for being here. And I'm going to present you with this, along with the mayor, I hope, and we'd like to invite you to say a few words.
See, Rocky got off light, dude.
You did very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, why don't we do a group photo right over here, so the council can be in charge?
Yes, we are.
They're gonna come in behind you, everybody, that's great. I never know what to do in Miami. Thank you all.
proclamation, and thank you so much to Councilmember Berluci for reading all of those words. We greatly appreciate it, and I know it was a lot, but we really wanted to emphasize the importance of just how many organizations there are working in our great city to make this one of the best cities in the country for our autism population. Autism acceptance is important to having a vibrant and successful community across all areas of the community. Autism has become more and more prevalent, just from the time I spoke to you last February, or this past February until now, the number has gone up once more from 1 in 44 kids born with autism to 1 in 36, and it will continue to grow. We really appreciate your time being here. I know you guys have heard plenty from me in the last couple of months, but I really wanted to take the time to introduce you all to some of the other amazing organizations that are going to be in our new Autism Resource Center, right here in the heart of Virginia Beach. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christine Ross, and I am the Executive Director and founder of Aid Another. Aid Another is a local nonprofit organization who provides services to individuals with disabilities in Hampton Roads. Our mission is to promote and empower the unique talents and visions of individuals with a disability. It is our vision to help fulfill the adaptive needs of children and adults with disabilities and to continue to foster a positive and successful relationship with the people in the community. Aid Another has created a number of programs to enrich the lives of individuals with disabilities in a safe, supportive, instructive environment such as art, dance, music, educational assistance, recreational activities, sports, vocational lifestyle development. I am honored to be here in front of you guys celebrating Autism Acceptance Month. When I started Aid Another five years ago, I started it because I wanted my middle child, who had just been diagnosed with autism, to have the same experiences, opportunity, and community engagement like his older brother did. Being part of an engaging community is so important to me because community gives us a sense of belonging, and as we all know, belonging equals happiness. Thank you for your time, please visit our website for more information, and make today the day you aid another.
Hi, my name is Sharon Russell, and I am the Board President of Autism Society, Tidewater, Virginia affiliate. For the past 42 years, we have endeavored to connect the autism community to resources they need through education, advocacy, supports, information, and referrals, and community programming to empower them to live a full life where everyone is respected for their unique and individual differences. Thanks to the support of the community and the city leadership, we provided information and referral services for 1,981 individuals last year. Last year, we also provided over $20,000 in direct assistance scholarships to cover costs for various support services. We've hosted over 100 support groups for parents, caregivers, and adults with autism, providing a vital connection to our community. We've also provided first responder training throughout Hampton Roads. As we work together to bridge the gap between the youth and adult population, we've enhanced our teen and adult programs to include our very successful relationship skills building. And we have recently been working on employment initiatives. So I want to thank you again for your support, the impact that we've made, and the impact that we continue to thrive for would not be possible without all of your support. So thank you again.
I'm Tyler Hart, I'm the President and CEO of Commonwealth Autism. I'm based out of Richmond. Very welcoming to be here with you tonight, and thank you for having us. We're really excited about the Autism Resource Center. This will be our first satellite location for Commonwealth. We serve the entire state. We've always been in Tidewater, Virginia, but we will now have a physical location here, and with some of these great people, we're really excited to be bringing those services here. A group of frustrated parents formed Commonwealth Autism 25 years ago, and the goal was to fill gaps in systems, and we're still here trying to fill those gaps today. Right now, our focus is on creating inclusive preschools, so early childhood education, and then we also have some adult services programs, helping adults with autism transition out of the school system and into independent living. Really excited to be here with you, thank you for the support that you've shown, and thank you for having us tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Leslie Lawrence with Easter Seals, UCP, North Carolina, and Virginia. I am the Culinary Director, so we are really excited to bring a teaching kitchen to the Autism Resource Center, and I've been able to be a part of this program from the ground up. So I've served as the instructor, and I get to see firsthand the individuals learning and really developing those skills that- and really developing those skills that they can take to the rest of their lives. It's increasing independence, nutrition, wellness, and just overall happiness. So, we are so excited to join and unite with these other providers in this area, and really wrap our arms around the individuals here in Hampton Roads. Thank you for your support and for having us.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Allison Barclift, and I'm here with Centerra Healthcare. And our mission is to improve health every day, and the vision that we do that through is by always striving to be the healthcare provider of choice in our community, and that means that we have to be in our community. That means that we have to meet our community members where they are, with the supports that they need. We could not be more thrilled to join with all of these amazing organizations and be in our community in the Autism Resource Center. Our outpatient therapy, we have early intervention, aquatic therapy, we are always working on expanding our services, and we are so proud to be doing it through a neurodiversity-informed lens where we are building on our patients' strengths and helping them engage functionally and meaningfully with their community. And we are very honored to be part of this resolution, and very appreciative of this Autism Acceptance Month and understanding where we are moving forward. We are aware, and now we are accepting, and we are moving towards true community appreciation. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
As I squeakily wheel up. City council members, thank you for having us today. My name is Rhonda Osasek, and I am a speech and language pathologist, and the founder and owner of Social Butterflies Club. I'm also a Virginia Beach native, I love the city. I was born and raised here, my dad was in the military, and we moved here and stayed here because we loved it so much. I raised my son here, he went to First Colonial High School, and is thriving at University of Virginia because of everything the city provided for him. But I've always had this heartfelt wish that the city would provide services for kids with special needs, and it is long overdue, and I am so excited to be part of the Autism Resource Center and to collaborate with these professionals, because it just makes our city that much greater. And as you know, as you heard, we do social communication, group therapy. Speech pathologists are uniquely trained in social and communication skills, and that is one of the markers of autism, is the lack of social and communication. So, we actually get to play with these children and teach them to play, and they learn through play. But we've also recently brought our teens in because they are facing challenges now that nobody expected them to face, so we're helping them, not just kids with autism, but also kids that have no label but just need that support. So, we're just so happy to be part of this, and we thank you for recognizing it and helping us get this much-needed service in the community. So, thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Hey, thank you. Virginia Beach, you know, prides itself on always striving to be a healthy community, and, you know, cancer is something that affects pretty much everybody in the country family-wise, and this is Cancer Awareness Month. So, I'm going to ask Bobby Levin, Donna Rinnick, and Bruce, Dr. Bruce Westholt, come on up. And we have for you today a resolution signed by all of council members. Whereas, we are all aware of the prevalence of cancer in our society today, and the toll it takes on those who are afflicted, as well as their families and loved ones, and we know someone who has been touched by it in some way. And whereas, in this country, one of every two men and one in every three women are diagnosed with cancer in their lifetime, with 1.9 million-plus new cancer cases that will be diagnosed just this year alone. And whereas, while the battle against cancer continues, there are important steps we can take to fight back. First, by detecting cancer early through screening tests that increase not only the chance of detecting some cancers, but possibly make it easier to treat them. And whereas, the choices made about diet, exercise, and other habits can affect overall health, as well as the risk for developing cancer and some other serious diseases, it is also important to understand that cancer screening tests can find cancer in people who have no symptoms. And whereas, unfortunately, medical mistrust, limited access to healthcare, financial insecurity, and geographic locations impact the likelihood of being screened, it is vital that we get the word out of the importance of early screening to everyone. And whereas, far too many individuals for whom screening is recommended remain unscreened, and this is a situation that has been exacerbated by a major decline in cancer screening resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic, almost 90% in some cases. Whereas, as part of the American Cancer Society's Mayors Against Cancer Campaign, and as members of the Virginia Beach City Council, we are asking all community leaders, companies, institutions, and organizations to help alleviate the devastating burden of this disease, and help us towards ending cancer as we know it. Get the message out to everyone, catch cancer early through screening tests, they can save your life. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Virginia Beach City Council pause in its deliberations to recognize the efforts of the American Cancer Society to encourage everyone to get screened for cancer, regardless of health, age, or health history, and offer our full support to this vital campaign that can save so many lives. Adopted by the City Council of Virginia Beach on this 18th day of April 2023, and present this resolution duly signed by each member of the Virginia Beach City Council. Thank you. Tell you what, while I'm coming down, Rosemary, would you like to say?
I'd like to say something, I think Worth would like to say something.
And then Worth also.
I can't let this moment go by without saying hello to my good friend Donna, and I've been her honorary chair for Relay for Life over the years, and you haven't called me in a while, so I've been missing you, girlfriend.
You've been busy.
But I am a breast cancer survivor myself now, and if you knew that, and then I lost my beloved husband 10 years ago to that horrible anaplastic thyroid cancer that Officer Chevy died of last night, which is just a devastating cancer. And Tony Nero and I co-founded The Crush Cancer that raises money for rare cancer research, and our event's the first Sunday in May, if anybody would like to come out and cycle on a stationary bike, and so far, we've raised $2 million, it has gone to research, and that's how we're going to beat this, is with the research, as you well know. So, this has definitely touched my life in a big way, and Donna, I truly appreciate our friendship.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Vice Mayor Wilson, I too have, I'm not a cancer survivor per se, but my family has dealt with cancer at all ages, and so I really applaud the efforts of the American Cancer Society and our medical community, and all caregivers. The good news is that we can get screenings, can be proactive about it, we also can have a very good attitude as well when we're dealing with it. So, thank you for your efforts, and say thoughts and prayers for all of us who are working through this right now.
And it's an honor to present you all with this resolution, and I invite each one of you, you know, to kindly speak to the community.
Thank you for listening to our plea, and we're hoping that more people out there will listen to our plea. Our biggest fear right now is because of the pandemic, people didn't go to their doctors. Why wouldn't I go to a doctor? You know, people were sick there, and I don't want the COVID, so I'm not going to show up. Unfortunately, over the years, our statistics have gotten better. We've dropped down, every couple of years, dropped down more. Our biggest fear right now is it's going to start to rise again. Prevention, education, and just getting after your friends, your family, your neighbors. Ask them when they had that last colonoscopy, ask them when they had their last mammogram, ask them when they saw their doctor last. And many times, we're fortunate, we live in a big city, we've got access, hopefully because of good insurance, to facilities. I deal a lot of times over the mountains with the rural areas, and I've always remember one thing that happened. We took a mammogram in one of the trucks over there, and this woman walked up, and I said, I need some information. I got her name and so forth, her age. She was 52 years old, and I asked her, I said, okay, now you've had a mammogram before? No. Have you talked to your doctor about anything along this line? And she said, no. I said, when was the last time you saw your doctor? She said, when I had my son. And I said, okay, how old is your son? And she's telling me she's 52. Oh, he's, let's see, I was 15 when I had him, and I start, oh, the math in my mind is, that's the last time she saw her doctor. The rural people don't have access, but again, in our own backyard, they don't have access. I was reading statistics recently, this was right before the pandemic, and I noticed that on there, it said Portsmouth area was the worst in the state for prostate cancer, colorectal cancer, breast cancer. Wow, that's terrible, the worst in our state. Right below that was the American Cancer Society's and the National Institute of Health. Statistics on the country, we were, Portsmouth was number five in the country? And again, it's having access to care, having access to your doctor, having access to anything that's going to assist keeping this dreaded disease, cancer, at bay. We thank you for your resolution, we thank you, Mayor, for the fact that you've gone forward. I'm going to hand you a torch to continue to do that. When you go to the national conventions and that, get the word out. We thank you. I know, looking around, I'm sure I could ask every one of you, have you been touched by cancer? And usually, everyone shakes their head, yes. Thank you, Rosemary, for your eloquent words, and yes, and I will come after you, we have a relay coming up the 3rd of June, so it's a Saturday, I will see you there.
I know, thank you. Hey, Bobby.
How are you, Mr. Mayor? Hello, everyone, my name's Bobby Levin. I just wanted to personally, Mr. Mayor, thank you, which started out as a lunch and just making yourself available, has now moved forward. And again, like Donna, I thank you personally for taking the lead and embracing the Mayors Against Cancer Campaign. I'm a stage four survivor, I had stomach, kidney, and lymphoma, and this is the man that diagnosed me. He is my friend, he saved my life. And having beat it, now I dedicate myself to the things that are most important to me, and that is giving back to our community in any way that I can. And I thank Bruce, Donna for including me and just letting me contribute. And I thank all of the council for lending your support. I extend my condolences to the entire firefighting community for their loss, and it is, I mean, cancer sucks, there's no making it pretty. The good news is, it can be prevented, we're moving in the right direction, and do get screened. And thank you again.
Thank you, Bobby.
You're very welcome.
Hey, Bruce, how are you?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I do want to mention that all three of us are cancer survivors, Donna Rinnick is. 23 years ago this week, I took advantage of home field advantage and had access that I realized that most people don't have. When it was my turn to be the patient, I called my friends back at Johns Hopkins where I train and said, who's the best guy to do this surgery? When I needed treatment afterwards, I said, who's the best guy at MD Anderson to see? Now, that's home field advantage, but the truth is, at the American Cancer Society, we want to give that advantage to every patient for every cancer. And I remember the night of my surgery, and if you've ever, if you're comfortable at a football stadium, or baseball stadium, or school, or hospital at night, whatever your thing is, there's a certain cadence at night. You hear the IMEDs going off, you hear the carts going down there, and I remember looking out the window at a building, at the beautiful dome at Johns Hopkins, that's, in fact, when they talk about doctors making rounds, the word rounds came from the doctors going around the dome, going around the dome to the wards to see patients. I bet your doctors don't know that, you can quiz them. So, I looked out there, and I saw this big building with the lights on, and I thought maybe they left the lights on by mistake, and I realized that was the cancer research building, because there's people working around the clock. And our job is to get the ball to the people who can take that shot down the field for cancer and make a difference for everybody. So, we, in summary, we are a, not even bipartisan, we're a nonpartisan organization through public policy and education to give everybody a better chance at a better life. In the last 20 years here, we've done some things here. When I think of our African-American Men's Health Forum at Norfolk State, our African-American Clergy Conference, and believe it or not, more people today trust their hairstylist than trust their doctor, and there's a lot of reasons for that, that I hope we have the opportunity to come back and talk about. But when we were talking with the mayor, we realized, we lobby on Capitol Hill for things about smoking and Medicaid expansion, we lobby on state capitals, but where people live, where people from diverse backgrounds work, are in cities and in government, and our opportunity, we have a relationship with the National Firefighters Association, our opportunities to reach people where they work and within communities is going to be through the mayors. So, with Mayor Dyer's leadership, we're actually founding Mayors Against Cancer, a program within the American Cancer Society, that with his leadership can involve the seven mayors here, we'll take statewide and eventually nationally, so that we can go ahead and get the best information for all of you. And finally, I do have to say, 45 is the new 50, because of the research from the American Cancer Society, 45 is the new age for everybody to get colorectal cancer screening. So, thank you so much, it's an honor for us to be here, and the truth of the matter is, as cancer survivors, we consider ourselves lucky to be anywhere. So, thank you, Mayor Dyer, and thank you so much, the city council.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Can we get a, walk over there and just stand and get a picture with you all in the background? And I would love to have this young man right here, I just knew he'd come over and volunteer.
I thought you were from the first appointment, I thought you were a photographer.
Dual purpose.
She's very persuasive.
Come in.
I have a little walk.
You guys told me to exercise.
He's getting his steps in.
Here we go.
As you can see, the whole council is behind you.
Yes, and Frankie can do anything.
Thank you for sharing this.
You're my councilman, I never pictured you met you yet.
Right now, it's a little spot with your chest.
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
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 Thank you. By the proclamations and the resolutions tonight, we have some remarkable people in this city. We are indeed blessed. Okay, now open a public hearing on the acquisition of agricultural land preservation, ARP easement installment purchase for 102.14 acres, 1713 Mill Landing Road.
There are no speakers, sir.
No speakers?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have any other speakers signed up tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, at that point, Madam Vice Mayor, if we can go to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and everything is on consent. Under K ordinances and resolutions, number one is the ordinance to authorize a dedication of 2,679 square foot utility easement to Dominion Energy Virginia over city-owned property of 1525 Salem Road Reserve HRSD facilities, and I will be abstaining on that. Number two is the resolution to authorize the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Navy at Navy bases located in Virginia Beach , rate the coordination of law enforcement. Number three is a resolution to amend the cost allocation agreement between the cities of Chesapeake, Hampton, Newport News, Norfolk, Portsmouth, Virginia Beach, and the Transportation District Commission of Hampton Roads. Number four is the ordinance to establish Capital Project 10664, the 531 memorial transfer, $1.2 million from the general fund vacancy savings to Capital Project 10664. Authorize the city manager to negotiate a design contract with Deals Architects PC and approve the 531 memorial site. Number five is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $4,660,479 from the Virginia Department of Transportation to the FY 2022-23 Public Works Operation Budget and transfer $4,660,479 to the FY 2022-23 Capital Improvement Program as pay-as-you-go funding, rate Capital Project 10401 Street Reconstruction 2. Number six is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $784,142 reimbursement from Mancon LLC and appropriate $1 million from the City Garage Internal Service Fund balance and transfer $1 million from the capital outlay accounts to the FY 2022-23 City Garage Internal Service Fund operating budget, rate the increased cost of parts.
Open a public hearing on planning.
Number one is David C. and Merrill B. Gerstenmeyer for a street closure, rate 15-foot portion of an unimproved unnamed alley adjacent to 650 South Atlantic Avenue and Lot 22, Block 20, Croatan Beach, District 5. Number two, Bourne Primitive LLC, Modern Savage Investments LLC for modification of proffers to a conditional change of zoning, rate office warehouse at southeastern corner of the intersection of Virginia Beach and North Oceana Boulevard, District 6. Number three, B&amp;B Associates of Virginia Inc., Indian River Apartments LLC for a change in nonconformity, rate expansion of apartment complex at 1008 Mineola Drive, District 1. Number four, Joe White Pembroke Square Associates LLC for a special exception for alternative compliance, rate allow for wall signage larger than what is permitted by the Central Business Corps Form Base Code at 4564 Virginia Beach Boulevard, District 9. Number five, Ocean Chilling LLC for a conditional use permit, rate short-term rental at 303 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 300, District 5. Number six, Michael Beyond DeLillo, Helen A. Lewis for a conditional use permit, rate short-term rental at 2113 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 2C, District 6. And last but not least, number seven, Kamis Properties Inc. for a conditional use permit, rate short-term rentals at 509 and 511, 19th Street, District 6.
Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Wait, wait, no, no, we don't have a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, do we have a second? Second. All right, the vote is open.
Councilmember Haley, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson, noting her abstention on ordinance number one.
Okay, we're ready to move on to appointments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Historic Preservation Commission, we're going to appoint Paul F. Morissette. Parks and Recreation Commission to appoint Dan Edwards, District 7, and that's it.
Okay. All right, vote is open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you have appointed those as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Any new business? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.